Good morning and welcome to the pre-agenda interview for Wednesday, April 10th, 2024. We have one appointment to the Land Bank Board of Directors. We have Kirk Berkeley joining us today. Welcome, Mr. Berkeley. And we will have other council members joining us shortly. Will the clerk please read the title of the bill?
Bill 281, Resolution Appointing Kirk Berkeley as a Member of the Land Bank Board of Directors, Replacing Karen Breen with the term to expire January 1, 2027.
Thank you. Well, once again, welcome. We are, we're happy to have you here so we can just hear a little bit more about your interest in serving on the Land Bank. Thank you for your interest in serving the city and would love to hear a little bit more about your background and again, your interest in serving on this Board of Directors.
Sure. Well, I'm an attorney. I've been practicing law now for 22 years and I have a lot of experience. Well, in addition to being an attorney, I was for a number of years on the zoning board and the planning commission in the city of Pittsburgh. That was maybe over 10 years ago now. But in addition to that, I do a lot of work with real estate, foreclosure, liens, cleansing of property through various processes, whether it's foreclosure sales, tax sales, bankruptcy sales. So I have a very wide variety and breadth of experience and knowledge in property, in real estate, and in particular, taking property and cleansing it through the entitlement process as well as the lien process so that property can be reused again. So from that perspective, it's something that I have a lot of experience in and I love this city and I want to see it grow and I want to see us do, you know, whatever we can here with a lot of the real estate that is, you know, has frankly been tied up in one form or fashion in the city. So I think it's absolutely critical to our growth. And so I also like fixing things. It's just what I do professionally. I like getting into, I deal with a lot of troubled companies, a lot of troubled situations, and I like getting into situations that need some creative thinking and helping to fix them and make them work. So that is of great interest to me to utilize those skills that I have and help the Land Bank be successful.
So no doubt you are following issues dealing with, you know, this area of interest and the city fairly closely and have, over the last several years, given your past service to the city and given your interest in these issues. And so no doubt you've been following where the Land Bank was, where it is currently and where it could be, or have visions of where it could evolve into. So I wanted to pick up on one thing you said about fixing things. You know, it's my perspective that the Land Bank is better than it was and more functional than it was, actually functional now than it was, say, you know, five or six years ago. What do you think the next step is in terms of making it even more productive, even more functional, even more, you know, kind of leveling up in that way? Any thoughts there?
So first, I do have to admit that even though I've read about it in the papers, I probably, that probably means that I don't know a lot of the actual inner workings of what's happened or not happened. So I will fully admit that. But what does, fixing it means two things. One is fixing the Land Bank to the extent it needs fixed, but fixing it, I should have clarified, more so means fixing the general problem of making sure that we can take property and get it into more productive uses. So, but combining those two things, you know, what could I do? What could I envision? I mean, I've already had conversations with the executive director leading up to today, you know, asking me questions about how things work and giving her answers and, you know, others that I've talked to that are involved in or, you know, with the Land Bank about just some of the things that I do every day that are able to help guide and give some expertise and experience that I think will be very helpful to those that are carrying out the mission. And so fixing it also just to me means, you know, taking it to the next level, getting a good working organization that has a good process, a good system, and constantly refining those systems to keep making them better. So that, so this thing is not in the press every day because it's working and it's functioning and it's doing what it's supposed to do.
Yeah. That's the extent of my questions. I want to thank you for your willingness to serve. I want to thank you for, I'm looking forward to your expertise being put to good use here and upon confirmation of counsel. I wanted to acknowledge that we have, for the record, that we have Councilman Kohari Mosley have joined us. I will turn it over to you to ask whatever questions you'd like.
Thank you, Kirk. Thanks so much for your willingness to serve. My first question I've asked is to the other recent appointees to the Land Bank. You know, I've been on the Land Bank for the last three months. I've learned a lot, you know, since my appointment. You know, one of the things that's been coming up more and more, I think it's a result of, you know, the recent effectiveness, you know, of the Land Bank is that, you know, in some circles, there's, you know, a growing anxiety of, you know, seeing that, you know, particular nonprofit organizations that have a level of expertise, you know, in real estate, you know, are doing, you know, a great job at navigating, you know, the process and acquiring, you know, properties and doing, you know, what the Land Bank, you know, is designed, you know, to do. And, you know, and I try to tell folks in the community that I think that are like individuals that want to start to figure out on-ramps of ways that, you know, individuals that may not have the same level of expertise as some of the local nonprofits that have been navigating, you know, the system. I say, you know, to them that we have so, you know, many properties in the queue and, you know, we're in a race against time. You know, the more, you know, properties that we can move through the Land Bank, that's the properties we save, you know, from the wrecking ball, you know, having to do more substantial and expensive, you know, revitalization in the communities that are, you know, most impacted by, you know, vacancy and blight and abandoned properties. But do you have, you know, any thoughts, you know, particularly given, you know, your legal, you know, expertise and how that intersects, you know, with your understanding of real estate of ways that as the Land Bank becomes, you know, more and more effective, you know, which I see us continuing to move in that direct direction, you know, how could we create on-ramps for, you know, individual residents and community folks that aren't necessarily a part of a community development corporation, you know, or a nonprofit? Not saying we don't, you know, we want those organizations to continue to do the good work that they're doing, but also find ways for diversity of residents around the city to find on-ramps to, you know, participate, you know, in the Land Bank and contribute to that recycling of property.
I'm not sure if I'm going to ask a question, but I was just trying to clarify. So you mean, you know, individual residents?
Right.
Not part, so for their ability to buy property?
Right, exactly.
I mean, I think that that has a lot to do with policy, education, communication. I mean, certainly there is a, my view, I'm not on the board yet, but my view is that the Land Bank can be critically effective and critically important to the growth of the city because it does all of those things. It assembles property for larger developments where that's what's needed, but also because it's community-serving, you know, every single street and neighborhood that has a property, a blighted property or abandoned property, needs to find a way to do something better with it. And in many instances, that I'm certain is, you know, neighbors or individual residents being able to access and acquire those properties. And so I think it first starts with the policy that the board sets, right? Is that something that the board wants or doesn't want? My view is it should certainly be something that the board wants because there are definitely instances where that's not only appropriate, but probably the best use. And then making it accessible for people, giving them the ability to talk to staff, find the resources to understand how they can come in and acquire those properties, and then communicating and educating people so that they can, so that they know the process, how to do it. I don't think it, sometimes I think, you know, we forget, I forget how scary those processes might be to someone that, you know, doesn't really understand them. So I think it's making it very easy and simple steps for people and then letting us do the rest of the work once the policy decision is made to, you know, allow them to access those properties.
Yeah, and then I have another question. I don't know how, you know, how much time you've had to kind of look at, you know, other, you know, land banks around the country or, you know, just kind of best practices in general, but is there, if you can, point to, you know, a land bank somewhere in the country that you think, you know, is doing it really well, that are doing things that, you know, we should replicate or just, again, you know, just based on, you know, your legal expertise, so there are certain best practices that you think that, you know, the Land Bank, you know, should really embrace moving forward as we continue this climb, you know, towards, you know, real productivity and really making the Land Bank, I think, what it was designed to be when it was created a decade ago.
You know, candidly, I don't know what, I mean, I know that there are a lot more successful land banks, but admittedly, I don't know exactly what they're doing.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Thank you. I think no further questions for me. Anything we should have asked you and didn't, or any closing remarks?
Not that I can think of.
Okay, great. Well, once again, thank you. Thanks for being here today and we look forward to seeing your nomination come up for final confirmation.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Thanks for serving.
With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second, well, so move, Ann, second.
We are adjourned.
Thanks.
Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, April 10th, 2024. We have some meeting and public comment announcements. All council meetings will be live streamed on the city's website and for guest speakers, please do not turn your microphones off. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Dossberger, Chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council, profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Kat Weiser.
Good morning, members of city council. My name is Kat Weiser and I'm the Manager of Public Policy and Government Affairs for the Allegheny Conference. So I'm here on behalf of the Allegheny Conference today to encourage you guys to support Bill Number 2024-0256, the legislation introduced by Councilman Bobby Wilson to expand tax abatements for development in downtown Pittsburgh through the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Act, or LERTA. The conference represents business, philanthropic, and nonprofit leaders from across the region, including employers throughout southwestern Pennsylvania who collectively represent nearly 25% of the region's employment. The conference places public-private partnerships at the core of everything we do as we work to leverage widespread collaboration to solve challenging problems and improve the economic future and quality of life for all Pittsburghers. The organization grew out of efforts originally to revitalize downtown nearly 80 years ago. In this past year, we identified downtown's revitalization as one of our organization's four strategic goals for our 2024 to 2026 agenda. We support the proposed bill that will expand the current downtown tax abatement program and appreciate the time and energy that Councilman Wilson, his staff, all the cosponsors, and all members of council have invested into developing a tool that meets the moment and addresses the complex and unique set of challenges that our downtown faces. Like most cities, we are learning that no sector alone can respond to this complex intersection of unprecedented urban issues during a time of societal transition. We have a unique opportunity to work together to create downtown Pittsburgh, a downtown Pittsburgh that we all know is possible, one that strengthens the role of downtown as our region's core, bolsters the city's position as a regional attraction, and delivers on our goal of a next-generation economy for all. Without tools to attract and retain investment and redevelopment downtown, we will continue to lose business, people, and tax revenue. While Pittsburgh is the 28th-largest metro in the United States, it possesses the fifth-highest concentration of downtown office space. More than 74,000 employees, almost 7% of the entire region's workforce are in the Golden Triangle, the second-largest employment center in the entire state. Leasing activity is already reflecting the fact that new companies are moving into smaller spaces, and we must accept that as the world evolves, so must our downtown. Downtown's residential market is already showing strong growth and presents new opportunities to continue diversifying downtown's building stock and creating new opportunities for our community. As proposed, the legislation provides a menu of opportunities and tools that could support a range of projects. Specifically, we know it's critical to provide these tools for developers that are delivering affordable units across a spectrum of affordability thresholds to build a diverse and downtown neighborhood for all. We're committed to continuing to revitalize downtown alongside of our partners and we thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Aaron Sukinick.
Good morning. Is this, is it going?
You can begin.
Okay. My name is Aaron Sukinick. I'm the Vice President of District Development at the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership, also a resident of Region Square in the City Park. First, thank you all and Councilman Wilson for this legislation to provide an enhanced LERTA for downtown redevelopment. We at the PDP are doing everything we can to reposition downtown for a vibrant future, one that's going to be less reliant on daytime office employees and more rooted in opportunities for socializing, recreation, and ultimately, a future with a much higher residential population. But to bring that future, we need to convert millions of square feet of vacant Class B and C office space to other commercial use and housing. Housing for all, downtown for all. This legislation supports those goals. And how important is this issue to us? Well, right now, PDP is actually in two places at once advocating for support of residential conversions and development downtown. I'm standing in for Jeremy, who's in DC today alongside leaders from 20 downtown organizations across the country who are meeting with members of Congress to advocate for federal support for residential conversions and public safety initiatives. So both PDP and the city face the same reality, a downtown tax base that's headed towards a short-term crisis in need of a long-term solution. And this legislation is not only part of that solution, but an important symbolic show towards solutions. This show of support is so important right now as we work together with partners to seek additional funds from the state and the federal government, philanthropy, corporate partners, private investment, and as many are willing to take part. So we at the PDP, though, we don't own property, we don't develop property. Like you, we have a tax base of downtown properties that directly support our clean and safe services. And with that Business Improvement District, we support revenue through a millage assessment of commercial properties for our clean and safe services. So as a fellow taxing body, I guess, we're in this together and we'll continue to work with you to overcome this challenge. So today, we'd appreciate your support of Councilman Wilson's enhanced LERTA legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no further registered speakers, we will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium?
Good morning, everybody. First, I want to thank, great words that two people previously said. I do want to thank council and everybody for thinking this through. My name is Steve Mazza. I'm with the Eastern Atlantic State Regional Council of Carpenters, 2912 Zephyr Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA 15204. Also Vice President Pittsburgh Building and Construction Trades and as well as the Allegheny County Labor Council. I'm here, everything that the previous speaker said is 100% correct. We needed to understand that there is an issue in the city of Pittsburgh. We need to understand, okay, if there's a problem, what do we do? So the first step is city council and administration understanding how to move forward and try to fix this problem. Otherwise, it'll never be fixed. We're at the crossroads right now with a lot of different things happening in the city of Pittsburgh and and around the city of Pittsburgh. Eastern Atlantic State's Council of Carpenters has over 5,000 members in and around the city of Pittsburgh that rely on work every single day. We understand about affordable housing. We understand about clean water, clean air, all those things that make our families whole. And housing makes our families whole, affordable does, but affordable housing doesn't need to be done at wages that are substandard to families' living wages. It should be set at prevailing wages where our organization sets that wage throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So this one vehicle will help us get somewhere. We need multiple other vehicles to help address this through city, county, and the state and federal government. So having the wherewithal and the vision to think this through and come together and work together. Everybody's not going to agree here on every single thing. I'm not going to agree with everything, every policy that's brought forward by city council and all the other elected officials, but having the ability to navigate through that and get to a place where it can make, as people say, a better place for all the city of Pittsburgh, why wouldn't we want to do that? Why wouldn't we at least want to try? It's not about elected officials' positions, it's not about my position, it's about everybody in the city of Pittsburgh that needs all of us to come together and put this thing together and make it work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Javon F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's that tall building at the top of the hill. Now, I just heard the gentleman here, and if you listen to him, what he's saying, I say the same thing, but I guess because my voice is so strong or heavy, you just get offensive. But you need to understand, I come, I don't just come down here just to talk or to be seen on TV. I'm coming, I'm fighting for a cause, and the cause is that to make this city more, more evenly killed for the poor black people. I know yous don't want to hear about my son dying. My son died in Wilkinsburg. Five white cops refused to take him. He was bleeding from his head, he was saying he couldn't breathe. They left him and said, if the troublemaker starts any more trouble, you call us. My son walked into that house, he went with this woman, that's who he lived with. And when the man took and was saying, he was saying, my son said, wait a minute, I live here. Turned his head, he was blind in one eye, he knocked my son out, then head, but it, the head, but it, the head, but it. Now, I come down and a lot of times I say about my son, yous don't, may not want to hear it, but from all these years, he died in 2002, until, this is '23, and finally this year, I realized, when I stand up here and say that when he came and kicked my son, my son was on the floor, when he kicked my son, I felt it in Pittsburgh. I was on the bed with my friend and I remember saying, oh, so much pain. And I went in and sat on that, tried to sit down, but I couldn't. And then there was so much pain, I remember saying, oh, Lord, am I dying, all this pain. It put me to sleep. I remember my girlfriend calling me. I remember waking up and I walked back and I said, ma'am, I don't know what that was. That's when I went home and that's when my husband said, they called. Charlie said Tony got in a fight with her friend. And I remember my husband saying, what kind of man beat a man so bad he got to go to the hospital? Then when they called me at 12:02, I had fell asleep and I remember looking at the time and that's when she says about Anthony Johnson. I said, oh, miss, I was asleep, I'm his mother, please give me a minute, but she just hollered out, we lost him. I didn't say anything and then she started screaming at me, he's dead, he's dead, he's dead. Well, what do you say? What do you do? And then she said, you, anybody there with you? I said, my husband. She said, go get him. And I remember going upstairs and I say, Brown, Tony's dead. And I remember him sit up and he cried and he talked on the phone. I called my daughter. I couldn't drive, but my daughter went and she called me from the hospital, she was crying, you wouldn't even come and see him. And I was trying to explain, Chris, I knew I couldn't drive and told my husband, I didn't have no license, and I know I couldn't drive. I come down to tell yous, though, all these years, I finally realized, when I say the pain that my son died in, he didn't. I felt it all. Okay.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. Our first committee is Finance and Law with deferred paper, Bill 89.
Bill 89, Resolution Amending Resolution 909 of 2023, Entitled Resolution Authorizing the Fee Schedule for 2024 Pursuant to Chapter 170 of the City Code to Reduce the Cost of Employee Parking.
Motion to hold one week.
Motion is second to hold one week. Discussion? All those in favor of a one-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We will hold Bill 89 for one week. Bill 216.
Bill 216, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Citron Alex PC for Legal Services in Connection with the Litigation Matter in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania for an Amount Not to Exceed $10,475.88.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill 256.
Bill 256, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code Title II Fiscal, Article IX Property Taxes by Creating a New Chapter 268 Real Estate Tax Exemptions for Construction or Adaptive Reuse of Buildings in Downtown Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve.
Second.
With discussion? Second.
Second with discussion. Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to, I want to make a motion to amend the bill, or I'm sorry, I want to make a motion to replace in kind. Yeah, remember by substitution. With discussion.
With discussion.
So before you, you have amendment for the Bill 256. This, this bill is not a stranger to anyone at this table. If anything, this bill got everyone talking to each other multiple times and making sure that we're all in line with what we see before here, before us today. I think that, I just want to make a comment about last, last week's Standing Committee meeting. As the conversations continued, I quickly realized that there are fundamental, fundamental changes that had to be changed from the actual, you know, prior LERTA legislation that was passed previous to even my time being in office. And since we, we seek to make, you know, I would say, some change, you know, some slight changes to that, we essentially, you know, carried over, copied a lot of that language. And it really started a conversation that expanded into a lot of different, a lot of great points, a lot of great policy changes that are coming out of this, you know, or that are in this amendment, or I'm sorry, that are in this amendment by substitution. And I want to go over those. So first, there's updated and recitals because obviously the, the time is, time continues and the situation continues to be tracked and quite frankly, getting worse in terms of, we look at empty office space and the need for conversion. So there are several ones that have been, recitals that have been added and updated. We also updated the acutely deteriorated area. We updated the definitions for, I'm sorry, these are definitions that we updated, acutely deteriorated area, commercial use, commercial residential use, conversion. It's, so these, these definitions have been updated to reflect the need to essentially, each use will determine the amount of LERTA that, you could get very specific when you try to explain this, but essentially, I believe it's good policy that's happening here and it basically separates each different use. So if you're doing residential anywhere in the structure and you go for the, let's say you go for the 100% abatement or essentially the, you know, any of the, if you try to go for any of the enhanced version of the LERTA, then you would have to fall into one of the affordable housing categories to receive that amount of LERTA, that amount of tax abatement. And so then moving on, we go into- And so then moving on, we go into, we replaced deteriorating area in a bunch of different places, made sure that we changed the standard tax exemption period from 10 to 6, which I think is a good, good compromise. It's still double than what's currently happening. And when we look at the amount of cost that it takes to renovate a structure, I'm sorry, convert a structure, since the costs are 20 to 30% more, I think that we definitely have to provide more for any use of the structure, just in general, to get, to get these projects moving. So then, moving on, we also deleted everything and added language to make sure that parking wouldn't be part of any assessment here, so it wouldn't be incentivized to build parking. And I'm fully comfortable with, if I'm not explaining this correctly, for members who champion certain parts of this, to, to, you know, take that on and explain it a little better than I am, but the other parts where we created the tiers for affordability, there's several different tiers that you can enter into. I think the main, the main point here was to try and make it so that there's multiple avenues for people that want to invest downtown, for then the, you know, have an ability to, to enter into this investment and to be able to pencil out the project. You know, I think that there are some great conversations that came out of it, looking forward to more conversations of how we can actually get more developers on board and, you know, help them work with HACP in terms, so that there is a possibility where they can work, they can get the 100% abatement. But we do have options to go down to 80% exemption if the project creates 10% units at 80% AMI. So there's still multiple avenues for people to enter into this investment. We also adjusted the tier boundaries for obtaining the tax exemption by creating jobs. We just made, we just clearly specified the ranges from 30 to 39 or 40 to 49, and then you get the full abatement if you create 50 jobs or more. We also created, in this amendment, that creates a three-member monitoring committee to ensure the realization of this ordinance's objectives. I think that's important. It's an important criteria, since I know last week, I talked about putting dots on a map, but I think, you know, a monitoring committee could satisfy that need and actually generate the information that we, we seek. I think we could do a lot better job at, you know, recording what's in these contracts so that we can visually see and monitor them in the future. For instance, we're going to have to closely monitor who's taking advantage of what here. So it's, I'm looking forward to the work that that committee could do to make that possible. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but I like to open it up to, to my colleagues if they want to provide a comment, but first, or lastly, I just want to thank them for their committed effort to this conversation of ensuring that we're doing everything we can as a body to, to, to pass a tax abatement program that will be one tool to incentivize conversion downtown in Pittsburgh. I want to thank the administration for their efforts as well. They've been, they've been very helpful to engage in conversations with, with members so we can all be on board in the same place, and also to just try and understand what their goals are, and I think what you see here is that we have very much aligned goals and looking forward to the continued partnership to make sure that all these projects continue to, to work and pencil out, so we don't have as much vacant office space downtown. I'm going to try a little, little, little joke here, even though it's a very serious conversation, because if you know me personally, I like to joke around a lot. Just have to provide a little bit of light humor here. You know, I often hear, and I think it's been said at the table here, that, you know, there's, there's no issue downtown. Like I, I can't find a place to eat. It's just, you know, it's just somewhere that I think it's good, that you can go down, you know, see a show, the shows are sold out, no problem, right? That's true, because no one's inviting you to skateboard on all the empty office furniture throughout the 30% vacancy downtown, and these are empty office spaces. So I think we have to keep that in mind, that this is a silent death, and we have to make sure that, that is reversed as much as possible. Thank you.
Counselperson Warwick.
Thanks. Yes, I just muted. Okay, there we go. Thank you. Yeah, so I, I just also wanted to thank Councilman Wilson and also the administration. A lot of work went into this, and I appreciate the collaboration. I think it's a, I think this has been a really good example, just for us as a body, about how we can get, you know, rather than, again, rather than voting no and having like yes versus no, having like yes, but, and then collaborating to get to something that we can all, you know, feel, feel comfortable with. I do want to say, and I appreciate the, so just to, just to clarify, in this bill, there, in order to get, just for the public, in order to get the tax abatement for a housing project, right, that project has to include the affordability criteria. It's just for the public to understand. That doesn't mean necessarily that if you're going to do housing, that you have to do affordability, right? You could not take the LERTA, you know? The developers could decide to, that they, they don't want the LERTA, and they're just going to do market rate. But with that in mind, I, I really want to encourage, and I want to clarify, that you can do affordability without taking a haircut. You can do affordability by taking vouchers, by working with the Housing Authority and HUD. And I understand that there are challenges there, right? There are some challenges with the, with the voucher program, but I will say that I know I am committed, I know Councilman Mosley is committed on the board of HACP, perhaps sometimes to Director Binion's chagrin, I am committed to working with HACP to get that, you know, to make sure that that process is one that is simple and, and working for landlords and for property owners. So that is something, and you know, we have some time here, right? We have time before any of these buildings go up. So I really want to underscore how important it is for the folks building this housing downtown to take advantage of those programs. It makes economic sense for the projects. It makes sense for the city because it creates diverse, you know, diverse neighborhoods, and it's, it's good all around. The, the last point I want to make, which is, just going through this whole process, this was like LERTA 101 for, for me certainly, has highlighted in sort of the original LERTA, as Councilman Wilson referenced, like the original LERTA bills, like, you know, what this, this concept of deteriorated area, right? And it's been brought up by a few of the commenters, not today, but, but last week. You know, this definition of downtown is a quote, "acutely deteriorated area." So just for clarification, those are like legal terms that you have to have in order to separate this LERTA from the sort of citywide LERTA, but right now, the whole of Pittsburgh is considered a deteriorated area, right? So, so there is a base LERTA that applies to the whole city, won't get into the details. But I do think that this, that going through this process has really shown that as a city, when we are looking at neighborhoods that need, that desperately need investment, including downtown, right, that desperately need investment, that need development, that as, as a city and as a council, we really need to start reevaluating this idea that the whole of Pittsburgh is a deteriorated area, and like the whole, and that any development in the city deserves a LERTA. So when you have neighborhoods like, you know, Oakland, Lawrenceville the Strip, Squirrel Hill, you know, where, where the south side, right, where people are just developing left and right, maybe we need to look again at whether or not those developments need, whether those neighborhoods need tax breaks to incentivize development, and whether or not we should really be focusing the power of the LERTA on communities that, that actually really need the development, because this is not the Pittsburgh of 10, 20 years ago, right, where the whole place was, was needing investment, right? We can, we can start to pick and choose. I think we're getting to that point. So anyway, I just want to thank Councilman Wilson and all of my colleagues and the administration. This was, this was a tough one, but hopefully we all made it through and we're all still friends. So, thanks. That's all for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cale Smith, followed by Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I want to thank Councilman Wilson and all members for working together on this, and Councilman Laval for his leadership, too. And I do think that Councilman Wilson is, you know, probably the, exactly what downtown needed, another voice, you know, adding to, you know, the advocacy for downtown. I think we all want to see downtown thriving. We all want to, we all know the benefit of downtown, a healthy downtown, what that means to all of our neighborhoods, and what that means for employees and people working and thriving, downtown thriving. But I do want to say, I think that when we, I also want to thank and recognize our budget director in Mohammed, and who, whomever else worked on that, because there's a lot of people behind the scenes working on all this. So I want to thank all them and the downtown partnership and others. But I will say that when we talk about the LERTAs, I do want to say that I think I would love to see something in Esplan, a neighborhood that has been severely disinvested in, and it borders McKees Rocks, which is getting a ton of investment, and Sheridan, which also is receiving a lot of investment, even though they may not think so, they've actually received millions and millions and millions of dollars over the years. So it sits right in the middle, totally ignored, and no matter what efforts we put forward, they've never been really supported. And there, that's an area that absolutely needs a LERTA, and it will connect to the West End Bridge and all those areas that we're investing in. So I want to see something investing in that area as well, some investment in that area as well. But I think that the overall idea is, I think we really definitely need to have a conversation of what it is we think downtown should be. I mean, some of us think it should be affordable housing. I don't necessarily think affordable housing has to be downtown. As a matter of fact, if I were, you know, living next to somebody who is extremely wealthy, I would probably feel really uncomfortable and insecure. I probably would rather feel more comfortable living in, you know, market rate housing and, and neighborhood, you know, like the neighborhoods we live in now. And I think downtown should be thriving and have a lot of investment, and I would like to do more and see more happen downtown, and I would like us to do more to make things happen. I, and I also think we need to do more for businesses to make sure our unions are working and to make sure that not only our unions, but people, because our unions are, I think, 1% of our city. I'd like to see other people working as well across the city of Pittsburgh and benefiting from the investment that we're putting in. And maybe, just maybe, we get people to a point where they don't need affordable housing, but they can afford whatever they want. And that's what I'd really like to see. I'd like to see us lift people up, truly lift them up, not pretend we're advocating for them all the time to live in affordable housing. I love to advocate for them to get what they need to be the best they can be, period. I mean, I struggled as a single mom, I tell people this all the time, I struggled. I know what, what people need and what people want, and that's what they want. They want people to really give them a lift up, not a handout. And oftentimes, we're, we're so busy on the handout, we forget that maybe, just maybe, to really build them up, to build their families up, and to help the communities in general, it's to lift people up totally. So I'd like to see some of that. So for that said, I'd like to know what the plan is for downtown overall, and I'd like to see us do more investment in downtown and, and getting people to work and for, for everyone. So that's it for me. But I want to thank you all for your work on this.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So it has been a lot of hours by a lot of members over the last week or so, so I also want to acknowledge and thank everybody for putting in so much time and thought and being willing to compromise. We always are reminded that compromise means not everybody gets everything they wanted. So I'm going to elaborate a little bit on the comments that I made last week. I am really grateful to see that it is not only that the word parking was struck out, but that there is proactive language prohibiting taking the tax abatements on parking structures. So I appreciate that, and that is throughout the document. So again, the, the original version of the bill would have allowed new parking to be created, an unlimited amount or size of parking to be created, and this new version of the bill does not allow any tax abatement, either standard nor enhanced on any parking structure. So thank you all for, I think there was broad consensus there. As a reminder to the public, there's no parking requirement for downtown. You can build 100 apartments, you can build 300 apartments, and build zero parking spaces for them. And that has been true for decades, I believe. Same thing with offices. You can build a hotel, you can build office space, and you don't need to add a single parking space. And that's important, because we know that as offices are 30% empty, there are parking garages that are 30% empty and are losing their leases, right? So we actually are overparked, as they say. There's more parking than demand right now, which is kind of probably amazing to think about when there was, you know, in a different moment, at a different time, when people were struggling to find parking downtown. The second thing that I want to remind everybody, that it was a compromise, I think that was helpful, is that the standard LERTA is reduced to six years, and that's a LERTA that means you get 50% of your taxes abated, an unlimited amount of taxes, there's no limit like our other citywide LERTAs, basically for doing anything. So, you know, any amount of office, any amount of housing, any amount of hotel is abated for the standard LERTA, for 50% of it, for six years, with no requirements about jobs, no requirements about affordability, if there's housing, no, no requirements for anything. That's pretty generous, right? So some of us were advocating that that be shortened to three years, which is more typical of our citywide LERTAs, but this is a more generous version for the acutely deteriorated condition that we are considering downtown to be right now. The enhanced versions is where you get the full 10 years, and you get all of your taxes, an unlimited amount of taxes, no matter how huge your project and how huge your, you know, hypothetical tax bill, you won't pay it, not a dime of it, to the city for 10 years. And, and that is where the conditions come in for the number of jobs that you have, so you have maybe 80% of the taxes abated for a certain number of jobs, and similarly, there's a range built in. I'm not sure I'm up to the minute, because we got a last-minute version right before we walked in the door, but there's a range of affordability as well that allows you to get that full abatement. One of my concerns that I spoke to last week was that it was undone, so thank you. That was what I consider to be a loophole or a backdoor, where there were definitions that were conflated differently than our other LERTAs that are applied across the city, where we have a separate LERTA for commercial. If you're doing commercial, you get the commercial LERTA. If you're doing residential, you get the residential LERTA. And even in, there's a third definition called commercial residential, which is mostly just multifamily, like big apartment complexes. And in the first version of the bill, those were muddied, muddled together, that I, what I considered to be a backdoor, so that it considered hotels to be the same as housing and housing to be the same as hotels. And that is undone and separated here, so I'm really grateful for that. That was really important, and it was really important to me. I say that because it's important that you have, we're trying to say, we're trying to provide incentives for new residential development downtown. Part of the talking points here, that the narrative is that we need to convert office to residential downtown. In the initial version of the bill, I said we could hypothetically have not a single apartment built, because people could have built just offices and hotels. That's still technically true here, and so I don't have as much comfort as I'd like. I propose that there would be an automatic shut-off valve if we saw there being too many hotels built per year, that if we surpassed a certain number of millions of dollars of taxes abated, which equates to hundreds of millions of real estate value in hotels being created, that those caps turn off per year, and then would re-up the next year, so the council could see it and reevaluate it. Right now, there's really no guarantee that any, any, any building at all will choose to do residential and take the residential enhanced LERTA. So, I mean, if you're building a multi, and there are, there are $3 million condos for sale right now in downtown, right? If you look on, you can go look, there's one. It's about 11,000 square feet. I was there yesterday when I looked. You know, you might, if you're a developer, choose to build one of those penthouses, and you could just, you would get automatically. And you could just, you would get automatically the standard LERTA for building one $3 million penthouse and did still not pay 50% of your taxes for six years. There's no affordability there, right? And we want to see hundreds of both market rate and affordable apartments built downtown so that we're repopulating downtown. So we get people, we get the people who are here already, they get new neighbors. So our businesses have customers. And so there are people on the streets, so that we really have a thriving downtown. That's what we're trying to achieve. And I fear that we haven't really put in as much guarantee as we might have for that public policy outcome. But I do appreciate that there's, this is a start. It's better to start now than to do nothing. And so certainly, this is a compromise bill, and I'm happy to support it today. Madam Chair, might I ask, is there another first round? Because I'll stop comments here if there's more people for first round.
I was just about to ask. It looks like we have a few more for first round, and already some people lining up for second round, so.
Great. Okay, then I'll stop my comments here, and I appreciate hearing from the members.
Thank you. I will just go down the line. Councilman Sharlin.
Figure that out eventually. I just want to thank Councilman Wilson for all of his work on this. One thing I did want to point out that he missed in his changes to the bill here. I sent out an amendment yesterday that Councilman Wilson added to his amendments. It's a pretty simple amendment under 268.04 about our commitment to organize labor here in the city. As it stands right now, as members are aware, we cannot require prevailing wage in LERTA because it's an abatement, not a subsidy. We, Councilman Coghill and myself, worked to try to find as close as we could to language asking for this, and ultimately, we are working with, or we want to see Harrisburg change the way that they view an abatement, and hopefully, that change will come soon. And as soon as it does, we want to kick in prevailing wage immediately to the abatement moving forward here. So it's a really simple amendment that we added to that, and I appreciate Councilman Wilson including it with his amendments. We don't have the opportunity here to call this the Sharlin-Coghill amendment as we wanted to, but, you know, and Councilman Wilson also parked in my spot this morning, so if there's anything else you want to steal from me, let me know.
My stay was parked in my spot.
Okay, all right. Well, that's fair enough. But, no, so I just want to acknowledge that, you know, I've spoken with members before about this, and, you know, I feel this way that when we craft a policy like this, we're looking to do a thing. And my concern with the thing that we're trying to do here is we're trying to work as one tool to save our cratering real estate downtown. This has turned into something much bigger than that. We're trying to also create, you know, affordable housing and create all these other options in there. But, you know, I think that our North Star here needs to be, what are we going to do about downtown? And how are we going to attract development into downtown? And as every other downtown in the United States is trying to do the same thing, we want to make sure that developers want to invest in our downtown. And for those that have worked on this bill and tried to come to a compromise and make it not as strong as was originally suggested, you know, I think that is, at some level, a gamble, and I hope you're right. And I'm thankful that in this bill, we have a monitoring committee that will be able to see, does this LERTA work? Is this actually doing what we want it to do? I think that's one of the strongest and the best parts of this bill, is the ability for us to have a check on, are people actually taking advantage of this? Is this actually attracting businesses to downtown? I'm not sure that this is enough, and frankly, I would rather go much bigger on this. And I've said that to, you know, most members here, that I think that we should be trying to attract as much investment as humanly possible into downtown. But, you know, I want to congratulate Councilman Wilson for being able to strike a compromise here. I want to congratulate Mohammed in his office. I know this has probably taken years off your lives, and, you know, I really want to thank you for your leadership and for keeping all the other members up to date here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Before we move on to the next speaker, apologies to Councilman Coghill, we are going to take a short pause. We are going to take opportunity for a proclamation that really only could happen today. So I will turn the gavel metaphorically over to Council President Lavelle, and he can take it from here with the mayor.
Cameron Hayward. Depp. Depp. Cameron Hayward for the Steelers is getting a pro.
They're all excited with hey.
I guess the one Walter Payton. Tax abatements and Steelers. Ever, yeah.
So. If we could have everyone's attention, this is a little bit of a break from our norm on Wednesdays. However, given that we have an extraordinary man with us today, we thought it was worthy of taking a break from our current standing committee meeting to acknowledge Cam Hayward, who has achieved one of the highest awards, I believe, in the NFL possible, which is the Walter Payton Man of the Year Award. And so we wanted to take a mayor, I know he has a very hectic schedule. The mayor wanted to honor him, and today was the day that he could actually come down to the city. And so we did want to take a moment to be able to do that. With that being said, I would like to bring Mayor Ed Gany up so that he can present the proclamation and say a few words. Can you come on up, Cam? Can y'all give him a hand? Give him a hand? You know, I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done. You've done a lot of work in the city. And I'm appreciative, because it speaks volumes of how you use your platform. And I always think we should use our platform and uplift other people, and you've done that. So I just personally want to say thank you. And two, I just like the way you tackle quarterbacks, too. I appreciate that. So serving Pittsburgh with distinction, honoring and recognizing Cam Hayward has received the National Football League's highest honor, the Walter Payton Man of the Year Award. The award was established in 1970 and renamed in 1999 after the Hall of Fame Chicago Bear running back, Walter Payton. The Walter Payton Man of the Year Award recognized an NFL player for their excellence on and off the field. And whereas Cam Hayward was born on May 6, 1989, in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and is among the most respected names in the National Football League, throughout his 13-year career, he has been deeply involved in helping the community and always using his platform for good. Throughout his distinguished career, Cam has exemplified the highest standards of professionalism, compassion, and consistency, going above and beyond the call of duty and providing life-changing care for support of youth people throughout this region, and always has amended to make sure that he speaks positive influence to our children. Specifically, Cam was commended by the Pittsburgh Steelers and now for the league for his one-year charitable endeavors, such as the annual Cam's Kindness Week, where he reaches out to different groups in the community. Cam's selfishness and tireless effort undoubtedly professionally impacted the lives of many of our youth, students, and young men, and their families. He has accomplished so much in his time as a Steeler in our wonderful city. Attending Peachtree Ridge High School in Sawana, Sawanee, Georgia, was a standout college player for Ohio State Buckeyes and a first-round draft pick of our beloved Pittsburgh Steelers. Since his tenure with the Steelers, he has definitely been an exceptional leader, inspiring and guiding his teammates with resolve, determination, and a strong will to be successful. So today is your day, and we appreciate you in our most livable city. Thank you for all you do. The day is Cam Hayward Day.
First of all, I want to say thank you for letting me come up here. Thank you to Mayor Gany and his council, and everybody out here today. When I talk about using my platform to draw awareness or to help others out, that's not accomplished without a village behind me, whether it's community leaders like Mayor Gany, or, you know, children, nurses, doctors. This is a, the award I received for the Walter Payton Man of the Year Award, it's not done without people like that. It's not done without first responders. It's not done without people taking an effort to give back. I like to think I'm a representation of that. I like to think that I had teachers that taught me along the way. I had, my grandparents are both teachers. So this was instilled in me at a young age, and I'm just very appreciative of this award. Very appreciative of this proclamation. You know, when I tell my kids, today is Cam Hayward Day, they might freak out a little bit, and hopefully I get a cupcake on top of that. But, you know, my kids, I'm just trying to show them the way. And I'm trying to lead my family and provide for them a model of how to represent your city. You know, being drafted back here and knowing this was my home, I felt it was a responsibility to me. And I understood that not everybody gets to be a Pittsburgh Steeler, but when you are a Pittsburgh Steeler, there's a level of consistency, standard to be held, and a responsibility to the city. And that's something I will always do and continue to do. And with this proclamation, it's just a stamp on top of that in saying, we got a lot more work to do, and I'm looking forward to do it. So thank you so much.
So I would like, Cam, if you'd be willing to take a picture with the mayor, and then after that picture, I would like all council members to also come up to take a picture with Mr. Hayward. And if all members, please come forward. Our chief of police.
We can have you here, just in the center.
Chief.
Thank you.
Let me pause on the second step. Yeah, perfect. And then, Councilman Coghill, yes, if you could come right there, Courtney. Councilwoman Strasser, if you could come right here. The others are coming. And then Barbara, if you could come up here, Courtney.
She's the boss. I'll tell you her name.
No, no, I hate things. I was going to let Kim get one.
Would you come up here, Courtney, right behind, in this middle between her and. So yeah, step up so we can see you, if you can. I don't want to, okay. All right, so let's look here. Okay, and then we're just gonna, yeah, it's a whole gaggle of those.
They got their B rolled. They're good.
We work in a crazy place.
Yeah, we do.
Never know what's gonna be changed.
You never know.
Your first couple of weeks was boring. I remember like, people were like five minutes.
We have lots of conversations still to come, so. I was just gonna say the same thing. We're at five. All right, we will return to our regularly scheduled, and I would argue equally riveting, program. in this line of work, you have to be comfortable being uncomfortable. And I appreciate you being comfortable being uncomfortable over the last week with a lot of tough conversations and I think a lot of valid points made, you know, around the table, you know, by all the members and I think that's part of, you know, being a leader. So I really, you know, appreciate, you know, your leadership. You know, one of my favorite quotes is, is from an educator and a philosopher named Joseph Campbell, who was the inspiration for George Lucas' Star Wars. And anybody who knows me, I'm a big, you know, Star Wars fan, but I think even Joseph Campbell's books and philosophy might be as interesting as, as Star Wars is, which is, which is quite a leap, you know, for me to even say. But he has a quote that says, you know, in, in your journey through life, throughout life, you will get occasionally to a chasm, you know, and when you get to that chasm, jump because that chasm is not as wide as you think it is. You know, I think that last Wednesday, you know, it seemed like that chasm, you know, was extremely wide, you know, you know, at that table, but I think, you know, all the members were willing to jump, you know, as, as we reached that chasm and we understood that that chasm wasn't as wide as we thought it was, you know, over the course, you know, of the last week. And, and I really, you know, really appreciate, you know, all of the conversations, you know, and all the input and us really trying to find, you know, that sweet spot and thread that needle, you know, between, what I do think is a very, you know, noble effort to try to maximize the amount of affordable housing, you know, that we could get out of this legislative vehicle while also understanding, you know, the need to, you know, create a legislative vehicle that does actually incentivize the conversions to actually happen, you know, and balance, you know, those two dynamics, understand that they're both, you know, incredibly important, that we do need to see the conversions happen, but for the public good, you know, we do want to, you know, maximize the amount of affordable housing that, that we can create through this vehicle without reaching a threshold that, you know, actually prevents the conversions from happening. And I don't think we would've got to this place without, again, folks' willingness to jump, you know, at, at the chasm that we stood at, at the precipice of last Wednesday. So, you know, for me, you know, a kid that is crazy to believe 30 years ago went off to college to study political science at IUP this last week was truly a masterclass in, in the sciences-making process. You know, you learn about this in political science classes, but, you know, this is, you know, the, the real deal of bringing together, you know, non, you know, really passionate, you know, intelligent folks, you know, bringing, you know, all of their life experiences and their lived experiences, you know, you know, to the table. And I do really feel like this body is representative of the various interests throughout the city. And, you know, it's really tough for non-people to truly represent, you know, over 300,000, but I do think that this body, you know, does that, you know, probably as well as anybody that's ever, you know, sat in, in these hollow chambers. So, you know, I'm really proud to be a part of this process, you know, I'm really, you know, inspired, you know, by the really tough conversations and the hard work that has gone on into creating, you know, this consensus piece of legislation that I do believe, you know, speaks to the varied interests, you know, around the table. And I do want to echo, you know, my colleague, Councilman Charlin's, you know, point that having that ongoing monitoring process, which I believe, you know, does create in some ways an on-ramp as well as a guardrail, you know, you know, it creates, you know, a guardrail that, you know, if this, you know, program, you know, is working too well, you know, we can, you know, set up some guardrails, but if it's not working well enough, you know, we can also create on-ramps to make it, you know, more enticing. So, you know, again, this isn't really the end, you know, you know, of the journey. In many ways, this is the beginning of the journey. And I, and I look forward to continuing on, you know, with other great challenges, you know, that this city has, you know, with that same spirit of folks, you know, being willing to speak their truth and being willing to be honest and challenge each other, you know, and push each other and being comfortable being uncomfortable, you know, as we represent, you know, the interests of the city and really try to make the city the best version of itself. So, again, I want to thank everybody. I look forward to continuing to work on these important issues.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further comments for first round? All right, moving to second round, Councilman Wilson.
Well, I really appreciate all the nice comments about this. I think that's, at some point, if we're talking about analogies, like at some point, I felt like an escape room. And the, the route to exit was, you know, having those, I wouldn't even say tough conversations, I would just say that we're, we're all come with different ideologies and we all come from different backgrounds, even though we're both Northsiders at heart, you know, we all come from different backgrounds and we have different theories about what would work. We're trying to get to some really solid data to, you know, to go off of, but, you know, at the end of the day, I'll reiterate what I've been talking about and I know some members wholeheartedly agree with me that, you know, this bill, you know, the, the initial intent was to save the, the tax base, our real estate tax base, 25% real estate tax base. And when we come to the table for, and it's important because when we come to the table for other things that are gonna make our communities great, like keeping the rec center open or making sure the, you know, the city's safe, making sure that streets are paved and trash is picked up, we're plowing the roads, all that comes down to whether or not we have the funds to do it. And so, for me, this is a, this is just so important and vital to keeping this city moving and to making sure that the lights stay on in these buildings and that, that we're not, you know, we're not in a situation where we have to actually shut the community center down and we don't have to make hard choices like that. So, appreciate everyone coming together on this and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my staff, especially Mohammed, Mohammed Bernie. So, appreciate all your work as my Chief of Staff and keeping us all together and making sure that, you know, that's seamless as possible to, to get this done. Difficult task. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for second round? Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe we're still on discussion on the amendment by substitution, right? So we haven't actually approved the amendment yet. And I, I'm asking about the procedure because I am going to motion for a cable cast public hearing on the map and boundary and I didn't know kind of at what sequence if the sponsors were gonna do that afterward.
Yeah. Is that inter, interrogatory?
Yeah.
So, yeah, the goal was to pass this, you know, to like basically amend this, you know, to get this amendment passed and then I was gonna call for.
Right. I'll defer, I'll defer. That's always, wanted to make sure we were, we were clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments for second round? I'll, I'll just say for my part, I, I also want to thank everyone at this table. I want to thank also those who are not members of council, but I think helped educate many of us on the ins and outs of a very complicated situation and tool to be able to, to enact or to be able to help, you know, lift downtown from where it is right now. So, thank you to those, many of whom have testified and have, have, have taken phone calls and meetings with all of us to help us through this process. And I, you know, to me, this is coming down to the alternative, which is doing nothing or doing, enacting a LERTA bill that doesn't go far enough. We talked a lot last week about pushing, coming, many people wanted to come at this from, from an angle of pushing the threshold as far as possible without going so far that the, these building conversions just don't happen. I do think we've gotten there and it's because of the hard work of Councilman Wilson. I also want to mention Council President Lavelle, a lot of, a lot of, and everyone at this table who has, has been part of those conversations. And if we did nothing, it would virtually guarantee that our, our buildings downtown would go into foreclosure and be sold for pennies on the dollar in bankruptcy sales and just undermine the real estate market and the taxable value for all downtown properties, even the healthy ones. And then in turn starve our ability to properly serve our residents, as we've mentioned before. So, it really is what happens downtown is, is, is going to affect the entire city and why we spent so long and so many hours deliberating on this. It also, you know, is going to affect not just building trades in the building of these buildings, but the, or conversion of these buildings, but the service workers who will get new jobs or could lose their jobs if we did it, you know, the wrong way. So, if we had missed this opportunity and create, you know, what we hope 100% will be unionized jobs for working and middle-class individuals. And we've also talked a lot about the fact that this is one tool in the toolbox and yes, we need this necessary piece, but we also need every dollar of state and federal and philanthropic and nonprofit support to be able to ensure that our downtown is as healthy as possible. And I hope that, you know, all of us can, in the way that we work together for this, also work together to call for Lytech support for affordable housing and for R-CAP support for, you know, the gap financing that might be needed. Because as we can tell here today, we're, we're powerful when we work together. We need, I'm speaking for me, I'm not speaking for my, for my colleagues, but regular county bite assessments to establish a fair taxation, taxation system. We need ongoing programming that, you know, thanks to many partners here today are already doing in downtown to ensure everyone feels comfortable and safe enough to, to be downtown for the work, for, for living and working and playing. And so, in short, I am really proud of this body. I'm proud to be a member of this body. I'm glad that we were able to come to the final version of the bill that we have before us and I'm also glad that there's a, a monitoring committee established so that we can continue to look at the data, look at the information coming our way as hopefully entities apply for the LERTA and then I hope that we're not afraid to tackle this again as we need to, to be able to actually make it the best program for, for that time. So, thanks to everyone. Any further comments? Councilwoman, Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, I just, so something that you mentioned, Councilwoman, just made me think that, yeah, just like acknowledging all the folks not in count, right, like, you know, Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership, all of our various housing justice folks who have come and, and, you know, commented, et cetera. A lot of the time, it's like, you know, as council members, we're sort of like the, it's like, we're like the hub of the conversation, but I think, you know, given this and moving forward with all these conversions, it's really, there's, there's, there's often this like housing justice versus developer kind of divide, right? And I think that going forward, especially when we talk about ways that developers can take advantage of, of, you know, vouchers and all the various, you know, systems that are out there to make housing affordable for more people, that these groups be working together. Like, I mean, I, I feel like a regular meeting with Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership and the folks doing these projects and our housing justice folks and our unions, right? Just a regular meeting so that it's not necessarily always reliant on council members who have a zillion other thing, right, to, to be having those conversations. And then when we do big bills like this, coming to us as a collective of all stakeholders together asking for legislation, right, so that we, we don't necessarily get into a point where like, we're making legislation, but then another group comes in and they're like, wait a minute. Anyway, that's just a thought, so, thanks.
Thank you. Council President Lavelle.
Thank you. Both you and Councilwoman Warwick mentioned something that made me think of something. You mentioned pennies on the dollar. The reason we're doing this to just illustrate is in St. Louis, the AT&amp;T Tower used to be worth $205 million. It is now mostly vacant and recently sold for $3.5 million. The reason we have to do this and the reason why Harrisburg and our federal government needs to come to the table is to avoid scenarios like that, which is only cascading that effect across downtown St. Louis, which is devastating their tax base. To Councilwoman's point, tomorrow, this might be a little preliminary, but tomorrow the URA is gonna actually announce the creation of a downtown housing working group so that we can indeed get the developers, get the, our construction friends, get all those stakeholders in a room to both help them understand the various tools for conversions downtown, even in this bill, and we didn't go to it in a whole lot of detail, there are additional incentives in this bill that will help developers convert at higher rates and achieve higher levels of affordable housing, but many traditional developers don't fully understand that. So that'll be announced tomorrow as a way to do sort of what Councilmore, Warwick is talking about, which is convene all the stakeholders. So just, and then obviously, thank you to Councilman Wilson, the administration, all those involved with getting us to this point.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second on the amendment by substitution. I think we've exhausted all discussion. All those in favor of the amendment by substitution, please indicate by saying aye. Amendment passes.
Can I just quickly, I also wanted to just quickly thank Council President for doing really a great job in like bringing us all together. He played a big role in getting us on the path to, to passing this, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
I second that. Motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor of holding for a cable cast public hearing, please indicate by saying aye. We will hold for a public hearing.
Madam Chair.
Council President.
With that, a couple of times, members around the table have spoke about sort of the future of downtown, what we envision it collectively to be in housing, commercial, et cetera. And all members aren't necessarily at the table, but that conversation has been occurring for about six months now, in part led by the URA, in part led by the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership and in part led by the Allegheny Conference. They've even hired, I can't think of the firm's name, but world-class architectural firm to look at our civic spaces downtown. So that, that.
illustrate is in St. Louis, the AT&amp;T Tower used to be worth $205 million. It is now mostly vacant and recently sold for $3.5 million. The reason we have to do this and the reason why Harrisburg and our federal government needs to come to the table is to avoid scenarios like that, which is only cascading that effect across downtown St. Louis, which is devastating their tax base. To Councilwoman's point, tomorrow, this might be a little preliminary, but tomorrow the URA is going to actually announce the creation of a downtown housing working group so that we can indeed get the developers, get our construction friends, get all those stakeholders in a room to both help them understand the various tools for conversions downtown. Even in this bill, and we didn't go to it in a whole lot of detail, there are additional incentives in this bill that will help developers convert at higher rates and achieve higher levels of affordable housing. But many traditional developers don't fully understand that. So that'll be announced tomorrow as a way to do sort of what Councilwoman Warwick is talking about, which is convene all the stakeholders. And then obviously, thank you to Councilman Wilson, the administration, all those involved with getting us to this point.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the amendment by substitution. I think we've exhausted all discussion. All those in favor of the amendment by substitution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Amendment passes.
Can I just quickly, I also wanted to just quickly thank Council President for doing really a great job in bringing us all together. He played a big role in getting us on the path to passing this.
Thank you. Thank you.
I second that. Motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor of holding for a cable cast public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We will hold for a public hearing.
Madam Chair.
Council President.
With that, a couple of times, members around the table have spoke about sort of the future of downtown, what we envision it collectively to be in housing, commercial, et cetera. And all members aren't necessarily at the table. But that conversation has been occurring for about six months now, in part led by the URA, in part led by the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership, and in part led by the Allegheny Conference. They've even hired, I can't think of the firm's name, but world-class architectural firm to look at our civic spaces downtown. So that conversation is having. What I would like to do is call for a post-agenda so we can have those entities who are driving that conversation come to this table to both brief members on what is the conversation taking place and then also receive input from members so that we are collectively having that conversation.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor of a cable cast post-agenda on downtown, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We will schedule the post-agenda. Thank you, Council President. So that moves us on to Bill 300.
Bill 300, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Diana Stifanzin and her Attorney, Philip Smith, in DeLac P.C. for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $11,000 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation File in the Allegheny County Court of Common, please.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Just one quick comment. I wanted to thank Councilwoman Strasburger. These regular executive sessions on these are super helpful. I really appreciate it, just like getting them all done weekly or whatever it is.
Thank you. Thank you to the Clerk's Office. Thank you to the Law Department as well.
Let me find it. I know it's out.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 300, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation.
Bill 323, Resolution Amending Resolution 703 of 2023, effective 10/31/23, authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into an amended professional services agreement with Fisher Phillips LLP for legal services in connection with collective bargaining by increasing the approved amount by $85,000 for an amended total cost not to exceed $385,000 over three years.
To approve.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 324.
Bill 324, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Allegheny County Department of Court Records for the Purpose of Adding Funds to a Designated Drawdown Account for Filing Legal Papers on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh for an Amount Not to Exceed $8,000 over one year.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 325.
Bill 325, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Ejeta Roberson and her attorneys, Ainsman Levine LLC, for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $25,000 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation File in the Allegheny County Court of Common, please.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 326.
Bill 326, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 857 of 2023, effective December 27, 2023, as amended in title, resolution adopting and approving the 2024 capital budget, the 2024 community development program, and the 2024 through 2029 capital improvement program by reducing Charles Anderson Bridge Tip by $1,350,000, increasing complete streets by $577,299.53, increasing flood control projects by $294,428.8, and increasing slope failure remediation by $478,272.39.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to invoices. We have a motion to approve invoices.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Invoices are approved. Moves us on to P-cards. We have a motion to approve P-cards.
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
P-cards are approved. That moves us on to Public Safety and Wellness Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill.
Bill 321, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Major Cities Chiefs Association in an Amount Not to Exceed $7,500 for Payment of Annual Member Dues.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
Bill 327, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Lazwell Steel in the Amount of $23,500 for the Purpose of Replacement of All Missing Handrails at Mon Wharf Switchback Pedestrian Bridge and Providing for the Payment of Costs Throughout.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Bill 343, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772 of 2016, effective January 1, 2017, as amended in title, resolution adopting and approving the 2017 capital budget and the 2017 community development block grant program, approving the 2017 through 2022 capital improvement program by reducing Southside Slopes Neighborhood Association by $5,000 and increasing Brashir Association by $5,000 in authorizing subsequent agreements.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Bill 344.
Bill 344, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840 of 2019, effective January 1, 2020, as amended in title, resolution adopting and approving the 2020 capital budget and the 2020 community development block grant program, approving the 2020 through 2025 capital improvement program by reducing Pittsburgh Action Against Rape by $5,000 and increasing Southside Slopes Neighborhood Association by $5,000 in authorizing subsequent agreements.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Deferred Papers, Bill 2023-2330.
Ordinance Amendment in Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning, Article 902.03, zoning map, by changing from UCE Urban Center Employment to RMU Residential Mixed Use certain properties located on McKee Place in the Fourth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, known in the Allegheny County Office of Deed Registry, as block and lot numbers 28F314, 28F310, 28F308, 28F306, 28F304, and 28F302.
Motion to hold for cable cast public hearing.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor of holding Bill 2330 for a public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held for public hearing. New papers, Bill 328.
Bill 328, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Site under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances. That certain site known as Beth Abraham Cemetery, located at 800 Stewart Avenue in Overbrook in the 32nd Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination and there is no cost to the city.
Motion for cable cast public hearing.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor of holding Bill 328 for public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held for public hearing. That moves us on to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley.
Bill 348, Resolution Amending Resolution 2024-0291, requiring a council vote on the intergovernmental cooperation agreement or agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh and County of Allegheny, Pittsburgh Public School District, and Pittsburgh Land Bank for the Shared Operation and Administration of the Pittsburgh Land Bank.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
No, I just want to thank council members for realizing that we approved something and we want to make sure that we see it before we give a final approval. That's all. Before we want to approve the final agreements. That's all. Thank you all.
Thank you. Council President Lavelle.
Thank you. I fully support the intent of us having these documents come back to us for review. There is a little bit of concern. If you're willing, I'd like to hold it a week for us to discuss because there's a little bit of concern of us, the concern of us authorizing, putting conditions into how something can be negotiated. And then if it comes back to us for final approval, us being then that negotiator as well. So we're sort of playing a dual role. I'm not sure if we totally can. So I would just like to work through it for a week if Councilwoman Smith will be willing to hold.
I'm willing to hold it for a week, but I want to say I don't agree that we're in a dual role. This is our role. It is our position to approve things. And we can't just, what I would say then is before we ever give the agreement, we should have made sure that we knew what we were approving. So we have a responsibility. So I'll hold it for one week, but come next week, if we don't come to some agreement on it, I'm going to have a lot to say. That's it.
So do we have a motion? Motion?
Motion to hold one week?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of one-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held for one week. That exhausts our standing committee agenda. We do have some meeting announcements.
Yeah.
This afternoon at 1:00 PM, council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill 2024-0059, zoning changes to single unit, zoning code changes to single unit. Speaker registration closes at 11:30 today. So registration is now closed. Next week, council will hold their regular and standing committees meeting on Tuesday, April 16, and Wednesday, April 17, at 10:00 AM respectively. To register to speak at next week's council meetings, please fill out the sign-up form in its entirety on the council meeting webpage by 9:00 AM the day of the meeting. You may also register by calling the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. We had all members present today, so can I get a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.